Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is discussion on the FY19 budget reduction. And again, we will have public comment questions after this presentation.
Shall I get started?
Please.
So, good evening, school committee. I'm gonna run through, I'm gonna try and address you all, so I apologize if you're behind me. I'm gonna run through basically where we are with the budget and what our proposal is for next year. I mean, I guess, the first thing I would like to say is, you know, I know I'm echoing thoughts, comments people have already said, but I would thank you all for being here. This is far and away the most people we've ever had for a budget discussion. Normally, when I start speaking, everybody leaves. So, hey, so I'm very grateful to see so many people. I mean, you know, we have a, I don't get to work with you all that often. I kinda sit in my office with my computer and look at spreadsheets. But I really believe that this is a shared venture, that we are trying to do something together to run this district. And that's why we wanted to start with what our priorities were, so that you understand that as we're making the decisions that we are trying to make here, what it is that's driving those decisions. So, first and foremost, it's the students. And I mean, you know, obviously, it's the students. We're in education. So, but, what we mean by that, and what, how that translates to practical decisions, is it's about managing class sizes, it's improving discipline, you know, as the principals discussed this evening. Supporting the varied needs of all our students, and maintaining our current programs, which we believe are valuable and worthy and support our students. And also, the maintaining teacher supervision and evaluations, which are core part of how we conduct business. So, just where, how we've got, well, the meetings we've had so far, we've presented the budget to the school committee, we've had one public hearing, and we've had a vote of the school committee on our budget, and that budget has been submitted to the town administrator. And now, the town administrator has published his own budget, and that has a different number. And that's really why we're here, because we have two different numbers to work with at the moment. So, this slide cuts to the chase, so I don't know how well you can see this, but, we have, and I'm gonna go through all this in a lot more detail, hey. So, the level service budget, which is basically how much we think we need to carry on doing what we're doing this year, next year, how much that would cost. That's our level service budget, 'cause the service we're providing is just the same this year, it's just gonna cost more. And I'm gonna explain why that is the case. So, when we ran our numbers for that, it's just under $31 million. Now, we, we, straight off the bat, we realized, we recognized the situation that the town is in, and the financial situation, and we undertook to make savings on that total level service budget of 1.5 million. So, the budget we presented to the school committee was $29,400,000. Now, the budget that the town administrator presented, which was based on what he believes we can afford, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that, was about $936,000 less than we believed we could meet. So, the total, the total difference now is 2.4, almost 2.5 million dollars. So, making reductions to our service of 2.5 million dollars is a huge undertaking. And that's, I'm gonna go in detail, what I'm gonna present this evening is really the entirety of the reduction, so again, from our level service budget to another number. So, there's two sides to this, really, right? So, there's the, there's how much money we've got, and there's how much money we need. And I'm gonna talk about both sides of that. The first is, why don't we have more money? And, hey, so I put together this awesome little graphic. So, look at that. See, you thought this was gonna be boring. All right, so, so there are, hey, so this is not perfect, so I know there's representatives of the FINCOM here who'll tell me I'm missing things, but primarily, there's four different revenue streams for the town, so there's property taxes, state funding for education, other state funding, and local receipts for other income for the town. And it goes to, so you can't actually quite read this, 'cause it's in white, but, general, other government, the local town departments, it goes on fixed costs like debt, and it goes on employee benefits. And then, we also have this little pipeline, which is for us. So, that's, and that actually, you know, you know, I'm sure, is Mr. Saldman will tell me, if this is proportional, that would be a reasonably sized pipe. But, so that comes to us, and we also have some money from other grants and revolving funds. So, the reason for this is, there's a few different things going on. We have seen a net reduction in our funding from the state for education, and that's because of school choice and charter schools, and that's where students are choosing, who live in this town are choosing to be educated in schools outside of the district, for school choice. So, they're not, they're not enrolled with us. So, I'm gonna talk about another group of children who are enrolled with us and get educated outside of the district, but these are students who don't even come into our schools. And so, the state takes money off of our funding and gives that to those schools for school choice. And that's increased, so that's, that pot that the town has is not as, as big as it might otherwise be. Also, employee benefits have continued to grow at a rate much higher than anything else, so there's another 5% increase. And so, pot, we're taking away from the pot, and there's this, this cost which has to be met. So, what's left for the schools and for other government departments is less. And the other thing is, hey, we have less, we have less grants and other funding coming in, particularly circuit breaker. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about what a circuit breaker is. So, we do have students who are educated outside of the district, who are enrolled with our schools, but we made the decision that we are not able to meet their needs inside the district, and so they are transported to specialist, or special locations outside the district, and we have to pay for that. And often, those students are special education, and we, that, when the cost of those students goes above a certain threshold, the state reimburses us, so they give us a percentage of that cost back. So, those are our students, they're our students, not like school choice or charter school, these are our students. And we had, so we received that money back from the state, and we had built up a bit of a reserve of those funds, but that reserve has been depleted and is no longer there. So, we were able to draw on that, we have drawn on it, and it's now no longer available. And so, that's why that's gone down, and that now impacts what we have available in from our budget. So, those are three factors which are reducing the amount of money we have to spend on everything else. So, that's the, that's the, you know, available funds side of things, and I want to talk about the expenditure. Why do we believe we need so much money to continue to deliver the services we're already doing? So, we start with the current budget, right? So, this is how much we're spending this year, and on top of that, there's one, just under 1.4 million, just in salary increases. So, that's just all the salaries, contractually obligated increases in our, for all our staff. We have out-of-district tuition, so that's those groups of students I mentioned earlier, who are our students and receive tuition outside of the district. We are seeing those costs increase, both because there's more of those students, and because, because the cost of delivering services to those students is higher. And also, related to that, the circuit breaker, so that's the money we get back from the state, it has gone down a little bit, and also, the reserve has gone. So, the funding is still coming from this town, but while we've been able to build up the reserve, due to the budget position of the last few years, we've used the reserve up, and so all those costs are now fully on us. Transportation costs are going up, so there's a whole other discussion to have about transportation, but we have to transport students to school in district, and we also have to transport students to those out-of-district placements, and the total cost of providing that transportation has gone up, for a whole bunch of reasons. There is a lack of, there is a shortage of drivers all over the state, and the, and the country, in fact, so that's driving up the cost of delivering transportation. We're also struggling to hire enough substitutes to cover classes when teachers are unable to, are absent for whatever reason. We're not competing with surrounding districts, so there's, so, and that's a safety, is an educational impact on students, and a safety issue if we're not able to get a teacher in front of a class. So, we are planning to increase the rate to be more competitive with surrounding districts. And then, there's a whole other bunch of stuff that, I'm not gonna go into detail, that, you know, increases in supplies and so on, that gets to about $70,000, $80,000. So, and this is level service. So, when we first started this process way back in October, the principals put together requests, things they'd like to see, additional teachers, new programs, they didn't even make it in here. This is just level service, so there was like half a million dollars more in extra things people wanted, that we didn't even add in to start with. So, I'm gonna just take a couple of minutes and talk about enrollment and the impact that has on our budget. So, clearly, as you all know, and linked to the discussion of school choice and charter school, our enrollment is going down. So, we are educating fewer students, about 440-odd fewer students since 2014. And that obviously impacts, you know, the amount of resources we need, and we have made changes. So, we closed East Wareham School, we closed West Wareham School, we had a alternative education program, we moved into the high school and the middle school, all in order to try and reduce the amount of money we need to spend. And we have, over time, reduced the number of staff as well, from around 400 in 2011 to around 350 in 2018. I should say, this is not all staff, so it isn't, this is just the staff we report to the state, 'cause I've got, this is, this doesn't include maintenance and food service and transportation. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit, and I think what you're really interested in is how we propose to bridge this gap in our budget. So, before I do that, I just wanted to reflect again on those priorities that are underlying all these decisions that we're making. It's really about class sizes and discipline, and the needs of the students, our current programs, and teacher evaluations and supervision. So, with that in mind, this is really how we approached this. So, we first looked at administration of the buildings and this school, so basically, everything that's done to administer the building, the schools, including the staff, the facilities themselves, transportation, and only, you know, then did we start to look at where we could make reductions in teachers. I'm gonna go through this in about, in four different categories. So, I'll just do it. All right, so the first category was, the first category was, well, so when we first started this process, hey, and it, an email that we send out depressingly frequently, we sent, we talked to the principals, directors, and asked them what reductions they would make in the number of positions in their school, that they could make without seriously impacting class sizes or disrupting programs. So, they look at what they expect enrollment to be, things like that, and we identified, you know, savings of up to about, just under, just over half a million dollars that we were able to make, and that was the first step on this process. So, we also, so I did say, we looked at transportation and how we might make savings there. So, we are proposing to charge for transportation, as happens in lots of other districts. So, people who wish, or students who wish to travel on the buses, who live, who are either in grade seven through 12, or under two miles, grade three to six, would have, will have to pay, well, that's our proposal, is they would have to pay. So, that'll do a couple of things. One is, it will give us a revenue stream, I mean, not, it won't be a significant one, 'cause a lot of students will continue to be able to travel for free. But, it will also, all students will be required to have a pass, and that will mean that we know exactly how many students are transporting, and we believe we'll be able to consolidate routes, because right now, we don't do that process, and so essentially, we create bus routes based on every student in the district. So, we end up transporting a lot of empty seats. Now, I'm not suggesting, 'cause I know I have heard a comment, I'm not suggesting we cram every bus full of hundreds of kids, but just try and reduce the inefficiencies of having buses that are half-empty or, or less. And so, there is a, you know, there is a limit to what we can do, because Wareham's a big town, it's, I think, third biggest in the state, so that means, we can't have students going from, on the bus from one end of the town to the other, so that's, that's a pressure on us, that we can't, we have to manage the amount of time kids are gonna be on the bus, as well as trying to maximize the efficiency of the buses. We have also looked, you know, the previous discussion, school committee, we are looking at outsourcing parts of our transportation service, in order really to bring other expertise and to help us deliver the service. And what we are hoping is that this, because one of the problems we have at the moment is we can't get enough drivers to drive all our bus routes, and so what we do is we use contracted services, so bus companies, to transport some of our students. And we believe that we're able to, through consolidating routes, and possibly using an external vendor, we would free up some drivers and some resources in order to be able to take more routes in district. So, that's a whole, whole bunch of different things, and we hope that would deliver savings around $170,000. All right, hey, so, that's, I'm sorry, this looks terrible up here. It looks much nicer on my laptop. So, hey, so, we have, so we have plans to make changes to some of the leadership positions in the district. So, this, so what we have, the structure we have at the moment is we rely heavily on assistant principals in all schools, supported by deans, who primarily focus on discipline, and department chairs, who, and that's the, so the assistant principals in green, principals in blue, assistant principals in green, deans in yellow, department chairs in gray, there's a lead teacher in pre-K, and there's team chairs. So, what, and team chairs support special education, so what I'm really gonna look at is assistant principals. So, there's a lot of changes that are gonna happen here, and it's hard to exactly say which is because, you know, which are just to do leadership and which are other organizational changes, but overall, our plan is to take away, so Minnet, which I'm gonna come on to in a bit more detail, and remove, hey, the, those assistant principals, and one of the assistant principals was from DECA's. We then add in deans to provide that support for discipline, and additional department chairs at DECA's, and also district curriculum supervisors and special ed supervisors to provide support for evaluations, supervision, and student services. So, that, that will save us around $252,000. So, I'll just let you look at that for a sec. Does that make sense?
Wait, did you say like the gray is, is our, is the gray?
Sorry. The gray or department chair, the? The, that's gray here?
Yeah.
That gray is department chairs. So...
What's the library? That was the library.
Those are new, those are the ones we're adding.
Okay.
All right, so I'll keep going, 'cause there's more, and, hey, there's gonna be tons, lots of time for questions.
Michael, can you expand that screen, so we're getting?
Yeah, I bet we can. All right. Yeah, we will, we'll work on that, and I'll carry on talking. Do you think you can? You don't even know, just move it closer. I bet if I can. Yeah. It's gonna get smaller. Are we further away?
Yeah.
Nice. That's fair. Move. As you pull away, it's a different person. Is that Phantom?
I'm his man. Wow.
Yeah, right. All right, now it's totally ruined. Okay. Hey. That's all right. You're gonna find it now? Yeah, all right. So, I tell you what, let's, I tell you what we're gonna do, right? We're, I'm gonna carry, I'm gonna finish my presentation, and then, I'm sure there's gonna be comments and questions, and while you're asking comments, questions, we'll work on improving that slide, so you can see it in a bit more detail. And you know, all this stuff will be available on our website, so you will be able to see it and review, and there is time, as we'll talk, as I'll mention at the end. The next step is for us to come back to school committee on the 14th of March, and ask the school committee to vote on a final budget number, again, and, so there is time between now and then for more comments, questions, for you to really understand what it is we're trying to do. So, is that the next slide?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. All right, sorry about that. All right, so, so as you know, we're in the, well, as you may know, we're in the process of feasibility study for the construction of a new school, new elementary school building. And we're working with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to develop, and that has been, the feasibility study has been approved at town meeting, and we're now developing the proposal, the plans, the location, and then that'll come to the fall town meeting for approval to move to construction. That's the plan. So, what the plan involves is combining Minnet Forest and John W. DeCus Elementary Schools in one building at the Minnet Forest Elementary School site. So, there are a myriad of benefits to doing that, both educational and financial, and what we are trying to do with this proposal is to realize some of those financial benefits ahead of time. Now, it's not gonna be easy, and this is not a situation we'd want to live with for a long period of time, but it's something we think we can do for the next couple of years, in order to meet this budget number, and try and meet some of those budget priorities I outlined earlier. So, this, the, the new configuration of grades, if we were to go through with this, would be, DECA's would have kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade, and that would be just under 800 students, which is higher than the capacity of DECA's at the moment, so we would have to have portable classrooms there to support the third grade. The middle school would be fourth through seven, with 767 students, and eighth grade would be at the high school, along with nine through 12. And the past programs are alternative education program, which is at the high school. So, doing that would save us over a million dollars, and that's why we're investigating it, because it would, there would be some building maintenance savings, and to the, by combining the schools, we'd be able to reduce the number of staffing positions, and both non-teaching staff, but teachers and support staff.
What about preschool?
Preschool, the plan for preschool at the moment is to be the high school, but it's not finally yet. Not part of the regular population. They'd be a separate area in the building. So, just, so, I'm almost finished, so if you'd just give me a couple more minutes. Hey, we have, so, I have, we have limited time here, and I, but I don't want to give you the impression that we thought four, four solutions and drew a line. This is the culmination of months of looking at different alternatives to reducing the budget. We looked at reducing kindergarten to half-day, we looked at, hey, not doing any transportation beyond, but we absolutely have to. We looked at keeping all four buildings, and what that would do to staffing levels if we were to live within the budget with four buildings. We did look at, you know, reducing all assistant principals and where that would leave us, and not increasing substitute pay, you know, moving back to opening the, the east or west schools, or the east or the cooperative building, looking at cutting athletic programming, or other existing program, and different leadership structures. But, you know, you know, when we come back to those priorities, priorities about what we were trying to do, then, the four options we came up with were the ones that best enabled us to live with those, well, deliver those priorities within this budget. So, that would leave a total reduction in staff, around 33 full-time equivalents. So, I will just add that this is, you know, we don't, this is a maximum, we hope this is the maximum. If there are changes, for example, if, you know, staff, there are staff changes that reduce costs, or we're able to find savings elsewhere, we will try and reduce this number. So, if I, we are able to live within whatever budget is finally agreed, with a lower number of cuts, we will do that. So, I will, hey, so, you know, we've been criticized in the past, where we come up with a number, and then we actually end up cutting fewer, well, that will be a success in my mind if we can do that, but this is what we believe we need, we'll need to do to live with a lower budget. And so, that would mean a total reduction of about 67 staff since 2011, which is, which is actually, which is a big reduction. It's about 20, it's about 19% of staff since 2011, sorry, but, hey, we've always, you know, we've seen a, sorry, we've seen a greater reduction in student numbers since 2011 in percentages. So, where that leaves us, so, with those changes, that initial reduction of staff we had planned, transportation savings, changes to school leadership, and closing Minnet, would deliver us a budget of $28,778,000. So, that is still around $300,000 higher than where the, the current town's budget is. And so, the next steps for us are really to continue working with the town administrator, and to come back in, hey, two weeks with a budget proposal. All right.
What I would share, if this plan would go forward, would be class sizes, because that's a very important question that we looked at. So, if we would look at DECA's, our class sizes would range from 20 to 24. We would keep all services that are currently being offered. At the middle school, our class sizes would range from 25 to 27, would be the max, and at the high school, depending on the courses, they would, you know, it's hard to say until we get the scheduling in.
Now, we'll open up the comments, and again, I'd like, if you could just keep, everyone who's speaking, just keep them brief, so a lot of people could get to ask questions, and to go to the mic and identify yourself. You could go first. And I know that it's a really difficult time, but let's all stay respectful to one another. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Siobhan. I have an upcoming kindergartner. You say that you already have the numbers for the DECA's if we go forward. Kindergarten is already at a high number, they will move up to first grade. Do you have the numbers yet for the kindergarten about to go in? And is there a backup plan if we cannot fit these students in?
Yes, there is. Actually, we would be looking at purchasing portables to move on to the DECA's site to help house some of the students. Right now, we're projecting a class size of 200 coming into DECA's, and we have space for the 200 students.
And is that in the budget that was presented tonight?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Next, you can keep coming up and speaking. No, but I meant for everyone to have their turns efficiently, you could just move one after another.
Hi, my name is Brooke, and I have a son who is in third grade, so this would mean he's gonna be going into fourth grade at the middle school. So, you want him on a high school bus with these kids, sharing a bus with kids that are up to 18 years old, and he's gonna be only nine? Is that what would happen, or is the bus is gonna change?
Yes, that's a concern that we have, and that we're looking at. We're looking at the various busing configurations. If anything, we would leave everything status quo, and move fourth graders to the middle school on the bus with the other elementaries, and then just drop them off here, unless we can come up with a configuration that would not have them on the bus with high school students.
So, they're also gonna be starting at a much earlier time, nine-year-olds, is that correct, too? They're gonna be starting, or are they gonna start?
Not if they, I'm sorry for interrupting, but no.
No, that's okay.
They would not, if they stayed on the elementary run bus, they would start at the same time as current elementary students.
Okay, and are you gonna separate them from other middle schoolers?
Yes, we are. In fact, that's one of the reasons why, if we would move the fourth graders to the middle school, the way that it is configured, you have a wing that you can separate, so you would have fourth and fifth grade in one area, seventh and eighth grade, or sixth and seventh in another area.
And where would they have recess, since there's no playground here?
We have fields, and that's where they would go.
A field is appropriate, not an actual playground to get their energy on, to reduce the aggression in the classrooms, that was earlier discussed?
We do not have playgrounds on the site.
Alright, so nine-year-olds can't play.
Good evening, board, my name is Mark Bianco. I just want to go back to some of the earlier presentations with a couple of questions. We started with DeCus disciplinary. My first comment is, I think it would be beneficial looking at long-term to use a universal program that tracks from elementary school to middle school into high school, so that you can trend this if you have chronic disciplinary issues all the way through. It seems like we're using four different programs to track this, so you don't have any consistency to measure against one elementary school or the next.
Excuse me, we all use the same system.
Well, they presented four different methods.
It was reported in four different ways, but we use the same programs.
Okay, so somewhere in the future, we can, we'll be able to see Johnny Smith's, his whole twelve-year career, because it's all being collected.
We have that ability, yes.
Okay, very good. The, so, I don't think we have complete data here. Two thousand and eleven, in the current presentation that was here, we have a nineteen percent reduction in support staff on the system. What, what is the reduction of students from two thousand and eleven into two thousand and seventeen?
It's just, just over twenty-seven percent.
So we have a twenty-seven percent reduction, and we're reducing the support staff down by nineteen percent.
All staff, all staff, no, just support staff.
All staff, okay. So, now, you, you also said that an increase is going to be built in of about one point five million? And, and built-in increases for staff that will remain here in your budget?
Well, it would be, it would be, the contractual increases would still be in place for the staff who are still here, yes.
What does that average per staff member, is that a two-point-five percent, three-point-five percent?
This three percent is the cost of living increase, and then there's steps and lanes for each contract.
Did you go back and negotiate with those unions to see if they'll make a contribution back to close this gap?
Yeah, I mean, it's not something we've done in the past.
When we look at the surrounding towns, our teachers are paid anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand dollars behind their counterparts. And the last contract that we negotiated last year is an effort to get our teachers to at least to be competitive with our surrounding towns.
But I, I, you know, I come from a, a community of business folks that would say, if we're going to lose thirty-three jobs, will the other hundred and fifty people pick us up and rise to the occasion to keep those jobs here? Which, which, in essence, builds a better support system for our children. Was the question asked, will they be willing to negotiate that number to close the gap?
No, the question was not asked.
Could it be asked before the final budget?
But I would just, I would just come back to that point about, you know, in business. I mean, the problem is recruitment and retention of staff. So, with the salaries we were paying four or five years ago, we weren't able to recruit and retain staff, because we weren't paying enough.
Yeah, I understand.
There's another explanation too, Mr. Swett would like to speak to that, now, if you would.
Two, two things. One is, I appreciate the parent who came and, and said, so my nine-year-old won't be able to play. That's exactly why we have this public hearing, so school committee members like myself can hear that comment between now and the next two weeks when we actually vote on it. So I want to thank you for making that comment. But, but with regard to compensation, some of you may realize in, in watching the news, the entire state of West Virginia, teachers are out on strike. They have to cross state lines in order to get a better pay. All our teachers need to do is go to the next town. Even with this increase, they are still underpaid. So, it is, since the, since every study that's ever been done about, about education says that what matters is the classroom teacher, the last thing we want to do is encourage great teachers, and we have lots of them, okay, to, to go to another town in order to get a ten thousand dollar increase. Unfortunately, that actually happens, okay? So, I am, I would not ask the question that you're asking us to ask. With all due respect, it's just not a question that is, I think, in the best interests of the education of the kids in this town.
The reason I'm asking this is, this presentation cuts back thirty-three positions that reduce the quality of education to the remaining students. The same service number that's there today, that will be there in the following September. So that's thirty-three bodies that aren't there to build and educate those, those students. I understand the competitiveness, but those thirty-three bodies won't return to Wareham, and it doesn't make for the most appealing opportunity for new teachers to come into our community. We have to be thinking about, not just one year from now, but five years from now, are we building a sustainable system where teachers want to come in here? Or are we constantly building a track record that shows decrease, decrease, decrease all the way through? I'll, I'll finish off with this one last comment. I have a, a strong background in education, and very early on in, in my youth, actually from the other part of the state, as a ski instructor, I was taught that the biggest investment is in the youngest skiers, because we wanted to build lifelong athletes. We're, everything in this proposal talks about reducing at the lowest level. The, the, the issues, the development issues, the education issues, if we cut back and squeeze these elementary schools and squeeze these kindergarteners, are not going to produce the results that you're going to want in the middle school and later on into the high school. So I don't see that this has been, you know, I didn't see in the presentation that there's a balanced reduction between all three levels of education. That's what I, would, would be more convincing to me, that there's going to not be a total impact at the elementary level. Thank you.
Hey.
Hi, my name is Gwen. I have three in the school. I, first, I'd like to say that I don't have any questions, but I will say this as being a parent. My children have gotten one of the best places that I think my boys could ever be. My second son is special needs, he requires a lot of attention, he's, he's ADHD, he's hyper, and I can say from experience, his teacher has done very an amazing job. And I feel with the budget cuts that are going to go on, it's unfair to us parents, it's unfair to our kids, and it's unfair to the teachers, and staff, and bosses, and everything else. With eliminating this, it makes it so much harder on all of us. With having thirty-three teachers cut, what does it mean for our kids? What kind of education are they really going to have? With that being said, this is disgusting, and this town just needs help. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we need to clarify before we go on about what we have kept for class, class size, what we have kept intact with this new plan.
Yes. What I would say, to share with you, at DeCus, your class sizes in kindergarten would be a twenty, approximately twenty. In first grade, approximately twenty-four. In grade two, approximately twenty-two. In grade three, approximately twenty-four. You maintain all special education services that are currently offered. Paraprofessionals continue to provide the support. Students will continue to have P.E., art, music, et cetera. And we have maintained the social worker, the counselors, the behaviorists, because we do believe in providing our students with the emotional and social-emotional support necessary. At the middle school, the class sizes would be approximately twenty-five to twenty-seven, depending on the number of students pulled out per class to receive special education. Special education classes remain the same as currently offered, as well as paraprofessionals, specials, and support. We're maintaining the social workers, the counselors, and the behaviorists in all areas, because we do see the need to address the emotional and academic support of our students.
It's also important to understand about that number thirty-three. There are many different positions involved, many of those positions are not classroom teachers.
So I hope that cleared that up some. Okay, next.
Shannon Rose, I'm a current, my daughter's a current fourth-grade student, I'm also a paraprofessional sub in the school. First, I'd like to, regards to the teachers, I'm a paraprofessional sub, not for the money, but because I want to help our teachers. I do not even make minimum wage. I am essentially a volunteer for the school to help out our teachers, who are underpaid and understaffed. Secondly, I want, I want to comment on how, being a parent and being in the school system, I can see things that other parents can't see. One, I can see how the cuts are already affecting our children. We, everything is always about discipline, discipline, discipline. And yes, as, as a teacher, we want to make sure that our kids that have the issues, we're coming up with programs for them to be disciplined. As a parent, I don't like the fact that my child is losing out, so that children can be disciplined. Right now, our child, my child is, my child misses her tech class, because then is no longer a tech teacher, because she's taken over for discipline. Not only, not only now that we have the teacher taken over for discipline, we also have preschool teacher, who is now doing double duty as, as setting the meetings up for preschoolers. Not only is she setting up the meetings up, but she's also planning her own lesson plans for a part-time teacher that they have gotten into the classroom. This isn't good for the, this isn't good for the classes, this isn't good for our preschoolers. They're not seeing what is, they need a regular person in the class, they don't need substitutes. And as for, and as for bringing in fourth grade into the middle school, we have disciplinary issues with the kids as it is, and now we want to bring them into middle school, which, which we've all decided has the most discipline issues as it is. So now we want to bring our fourth graders and say, hey, look at what you can become. Look at, and guess what? If you're bad, by the way, you know what? You're going to be the kid that actually gets more out of the system. Because the kid that doesn't do anything, the kid that knows what they're supposed to do, they're put on the back burner. And I, for one, am getting to the point where I, I don't know how much is enough. And so you keep taking into play, and you keep talking about how school choice and how it's taken from the budget. You keep taking from us and taking from us, and you're going to take even more from the budget. Because I know for one, I am looking into a school choice right now for my daughter, because I can't do it anymore. I just can't do it. And being as, from being from the town all my life, I also need to say that if you close Minnet Forest now, and you combine the schools now, without a clear-cut groundbreaking approval on a new school, you won't see it, because the town members will say, oh, you're already doing it, it's already there, it's already in place, you spent the money on portables, you don't need the new school now. So you need to take this into consideration, realizing that we have, we have town that wouldn't approve an override. And now you're thinking, if we take and we combine the schools early, that they're going to approve a new school later, it's not going to happen, it's just not going to happen. And that's, especially taking away our, when you take away our vice principals right now, and, okay, I see, you're adding new lists. You're, you're not adding to the list, you're adding more onto the teachers now. You're giving them more responsibility for the same pay, so now you're taking the chance of us losing good teachers, and having our teachers leave the system.
Hi, my name is Carla Troop, and I have two middle schoolers here in Wareham. And I just want to talk to the school committee. I know that this isn't you, this budget cut wasn't your idea, and that you have to deal with it and make these cuts. I think that the way you've decided to do that is not good. I've been in Wareham since two thousand and seven is when my family moved here, and since we moved to Wareham, we saw five elementary schools go to four, to three, to two. We saw the fifth grade get moved from those two elementary schools to the middle school. We saw the merger of DeCus and Minnet, where the third and fourth grade, which involved both of my children at the time, were moved from DeCus to Minnet. And then, now we're talking about another, what I consider an upheaval in our town, of moving grades around and closing more schools. I think this is not the answer, I think it's been proven, over the time that I've been in Wareham, that it's not working. It is not working. It's chasing more parents and their students out of Wareham. I've seen, just with every one of these changes, people leave in droves, and I keep hearing from the town administrator or the town in general, it's because we have to pay all this money for all these kids leaving Wareham to go to school choice. The reason they're leaving are these changes, these very changes you're suggesting to do My kids have loved being in Wareham, I've loved it, but I too now am considering, do I want to keep my kids here? If this next change, where you're going to, you're surmising to get rid of the vice principals in the middle school, who are critical to that school running as it is now, which I know there's plenty of people that think the middle school isn't running very well in the disciplinary sense. I think it's running pretty well. I mean, no middle school is perfect. Every middle school has their issues because of the age group, it's a tough age group. They're doing the best with what they can, and they're very dedicated, the teachers, the assistant principals, they are such dedicated individuals, and to lose thirty-three more from all four schools in Wareham, to me is, it should be a crime. I beg the town administrator to come up with a different way to handle this deficit in the budget and not cut into the school's budget. I don't know if that is still possible at this stage, but something else needs to be done. We need to be able to get revenue from somewhere else that can supplement that, so that we don't have to keep cutting into the school's budget where we need it the most in this town. That's all I have to say.
How are you? My name's Mike Byrd. At some point, I got four children in the school system. Somebody's had a Byrd kid along the way. My, my question is, how much are we paying for school choice? Do we have a figure? Roundabout? Kind of a Tupac question.
Yeah, yeah, so through choice and charter is, it's just around three million dollars.
There's our answer. I mean, I, I have no problem, if you want to, I'm the type of parent, hey, you know, if I'm not happy with Wareham's school system, I'm going to pay out of pocket and send them somewhere else. But all four of my kids, except for one who's graduating up a cape this year, everybody else is in Wareham. I went to Wareham. The school system is great. Yeah, we go through the leaps and bounds, but you know what? We need to do it. But for three million dollars, it's time to stop the school choice and put it back into the hot tub.
So, unfortunately, we don't, so, we can, so school committees can vote not to allow students to come in, so can switch off school choice for students coming in, but we can't stop students leaving.
That, that's fine.
So we can't, so...
This is where we are, I mean, three million dollars is three million dollars. I mean, three million dollars, three million dollars, and we're short a million dollars?
But we can't.
I don't want any teachers laid off. I don't want any more sports. God, am I already playing five hundred dollars a year for sports?
Yeah.
You know, than school buses? Then I got worried about my nine-year-old being with the high school kids?
Yeah.
You know? I mean, we got to reconsider that question. I mean, if the parents want to send their kids out, then guess what? You need to pay out pocket. I hate to say it, that's my opinion, but it's, you know, everybody should have an education, but.
Michael Derrick, is that a gross or a net number? Is that just the assessments? It has to be netted against?
Charter.
The, uh.
Charter reimbursement.
The revenue that comes in on the other end. Okay.
That's just charter though, right? That's charter school reimbursement, and then there's like two-hundred-odd-thousand?
I understand.
So it's about two points.
Give or take any which way, you're still around two million. Yeah. Plus or minus. It's something we need to look at before we start shutting schools down. I mean, all agreement for a new school, put it in one place, that's great. But let's regroup here and put, put a stop to it. If the parents want to do it, let them pay for it.
So unfortunately, what he's proposing is not, we're not able to do.
It's against the law.
It's the law.
It's the law. I mean, so it's the state legislature.
I'm sure I could talk to somebody after this meeting to figure out, do whatever. We'll pull enough strings to do it. I got enough horsepower, I'll be able to do it, so I don't care. But that's something we need to, we, I mean, the law's the law, but we got to look at other avenues. Thank you.
Just, just to be clear, if we want to look at this from a hundred thousand feet, this is what the school committee, basically the choice we had. We could bring a number of three million, one hundred thousand dollars, which was level service. We could bring it to the, to town meeting, okay, and cross our fingers. And the first thing that would happen would be by, by charter, the FinCom would have the right to amend that number. I have no idea what that number would be, but I suspect they would meet with the town administrator and say, what do you think? And the town administrator would say, I don't know where that money's coming from. Okay? So now we're in town meeting with chaos, okay? The other alternative, and Claire's nodding her head saying, yes, that would be chaos, okay? The other alternative is, yes, everything we are proposing is not ideal, but the alternative, remember, a million, one hundred and fifty thousand was associated with closing Minnetonka. Did anybody on this committee, certainly Joyce and I who were on the advisory committee, did we want to do that? But the alternative was to simply lay off a lot more classroom teachers. And that was an unacceptable alternative with our priorities.
And I agree with you with that. I do agree with you, but it seems like, and I'm not pointing any fingers, but what, what I can't stand is, it's been in the works, then all of a sudden it just bang, oh, we got to do this. But this has been talked about for a couple of months, whether it's whoever, whatever, and I'm just saying. I, I know how this town gets around. It's Wareham. You know? I can't say anymore. But, and I'm not pointing any fingers, but just come out and just, hey, tell us, hey, we need to take care of it.
We were still figuring this out this afternoon, where we were going to get the money and what this was going to look like. Till a couple of hours before the meeting, we couldn't even hand out the papers to everyone.
And I respect what you guys are trying to do. I absolutely respect that. And don't get me wrong, but like Mr. Sweat said, we got to sit up top and look around.
Okay. I've got to have the next person there. Thank you for speaking. We heard you.
Hi, I'm Marjorie Rakowski. I've lived in Onset for my entire life, and I know how they run the government. If you close Minnetonka and put everybody into Deccus and shift them around, there's no way in God's green earth that they're going to vote to have a new school built. Because they're going to say, fix what you have. And during the discipline thing there, I never heard one word mentioned about bullying, about kids being bullied. Now, I have a grandchild that was in an elementary school, in the third grade, was bullied because he has long hair and wears a shirt and tie to school, and he has a disease. So he has to be out every Tuesday, every twenty-one days. And the kids would make fun of him. My daughter would go, mention it, swept on the thing. My daughter ended up homeschooling my grandson for the fourth grade. He is in the middle school this year only because he misses his friends. I say to him, wait, I said, what do you think about the middle school? I like it because I get to see my friends. But he also has a fantastic support system. If anybody goes to bother him or anything, he has a very good support system. And Ms. Pont, that she will take care of anything that happens. But we can't continue shut all these schools, put all these kids in different rooms and stuff, because you do have kids that have different diseases and stuff. And the more kids you put in there, it's like, it's like a incubator for like diseases, viruses, and all that stuff. You know, and as my grandson would say, they can't even use a chicken wing. He says, they just cough all over you. You know, and so what's going to happen when we put them all into a group? You know, I understand, and like, like Mickey said, I respect everything you guys are trying to do. But the town of Wareham will not back a brand-new school if you move everybody beforehand. I know that. But I would like the bullying issue to be brought up because it's not fair. No child should have to go to school and worry about who's going to say what or who's going to touch that child when they're supposed to be playing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I wasn't expecting to talk tonight, but we got to let everybody know, parents, we live in a community that puts our school system at the state minimum.
Oh, could you please identify yourself first?
I am Michael Pont. But we're, we're at a school system, we're staged at the state minimum, and things go up, and all we can do is cut. What we need to do is get out, vote, get overrides, talk to the selectmen, talk to the town administrator, get out there and vote. We need money. We don't need anything else but money. And we're not going to be able to solve anything without money. Get us out of the state minimum and move us up. Our house values will go up, we'll get better teachers in our school system. We have great teachers now. I love them all, and they all do a good job. But we're not going to be able to change it, and everything goes up, but we stay here at a state minimum. So all we can do is cut. We can never improve. And we will never improve unless we move it up. So get out there and vote. Don't just come here, go vote. Nobody votes. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ian Marie. I have a daughter who graduated through the Wareham school system in two thousand and twelve and is a recent college graduate. And I now have a five-year-old in kindergarten. I wonder if the money you projected that we'd be saving, if you deducted more loss, because I believe a lot of parents are not going to be comfortable, like everybody says, with their fourth graders attending the middle school. I think we're going to lose a lot more children. Did you consider that in the savings with money that we will be losing?
Well, so we did make some assumptions about, what enrollment would be like next year. And, you know, did, you know, the short answer is, well, partly, but, I mean, what you're suggesting is that it'll be much higher than we think. So.
I also, and I could have this wrong, but the projections of the new school only shows roughly housing thirty-seven more students than what we have right now, with talks of new housing coming to town. I think within the next couple of years, this brand-new school is going to be overcrowded than what happens after that.
So the, the new school projection, it has some capacity in it for flexibility in either direction. So it can be, so I don't think, you know, looking at the numbers, the total enrollment for the new school that's projected right now is like a thousand and twenty plus preschool. So even looking at the numbers from.
I'm on that school building committee, and we met with the MSBA, and part of what we do is to have projections and factor that in. So projections were made on increased enrollment and, and trends.
I also wonder if maybe as a community, parents who have taken their children out of the school, why not bring them in and ask them why? What can we do to get you back in our town? What's wrong with the school?
Just to be clear, the high school has lots of capacity, which is why we were able to move eighth grade in. The middle school also has some capacity, and the new elementary school, assuming it gets approved, okay, will have. I said assuming.
You've been in this town just as long as the rest of us. You know that it won't be approved. Just like the override wasn't approved. It won't be approved.
One thing to keep in mind, the Deccus school is still, what, sixty years old, something like that? So it does need to be replaced. And that, and the new school will also have capacity. So I am not concerned. In fact, I think that would be a lovely problem to have, and it would give us flexibility to, I know, another transition, but potentially move eighth grade back to the middle school, fourth grade. This is all, the point is, we would have capacity to do what was in the best interest of students.
Well, fourth graders being in the middle school, I don't think is best interest. You're going to end up with more disciplinary problems because they're going to be picking up what the older kids are doing. It's just my opinion, and I'm sure many others here. Thank you.
Just to be clear, the number one, the number one thing I hear from parents either having moved their kids or considering moving their kids is not the sort of thing that we're talking about in the budget, because they like their teachers, in some cases, they love their teachers, but rather discipline. That's the number one thing I hear.
Okay, next. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessie Clements, mom of a seventh grader and a third grader. Detailed questions, the students' transportation that travel for free, besides the students that have it as a part of a special ed accommodation, are there other students that would be eligible to travel for free?
Yeah, so students from key through six who live outside two miles.
Free and reduced lunch students?
And also free and reduced lunch.
Up through grade twelve?
Yeah.
Okay. Do deans and department chairs act as administrators and teachers?
Yes.
Yes. Deans teach halftime, department chairs teach classes as well.
So what is halftime exactly?
Well, depending on which building you're in.
Could I, could somebody answer that for me?
Yes. At the middle school, it is three classes, no, one class, and at the high school, it is two classes. At Deccus, it is two classes.
And the other big difference is the deans do not do evaluations, whereas the department chairs do.
So the deans teach more than what you just, did you just say what the department heads do, or you said what everybody does?
The deans do not do evaluations.
And they teach halftime?
The numbers that I told you.
Okay. All right. I think those are my detailed questions. So big picture, so my daughter's in seventh grade. When she was in third grade, I'm at Carla, you said a lot of what I wanted to say, so thank you, I'm with you. You know, that was, okay, now we're going to put the elementary schools together. So that was a big deal. So now, here's another, four years later, here's a big deal of, of closing a school. Like, what's the plan? Is this sustainable? I've seen different, I, you know, different, at the high school, there was a combo department head for a while. Now there are going to be five department heads, I'm assuming, special ed, all the, the core subjects, but like, what's the plan? Are we going to close another school in two, like, are we going to go down to like one school, two schools? What, do we have a five-year plan? Do those things exist? Because we close a school and it seems like it's a knee-jerk reaction. You've been talking about this for a couple of months, maybe, but it's still like a pretty strong reactionary thing. What's going to happen in four more years? Are we going to be here, same thing? Will we all not have our kids in this district anymore? I, I mean, we don't know. So what's the plan? What's the plan? This is getting worse. People are leaving. So what's the plan?
Well, I think part of the plan is, how do we provide our students with an education? A quality education. We desperately need new elementary schools. We need revenue that supports our schools. And if we had the revenue that supported our schools, we would not be having any of these questions, these, these conversations.
So to the town administrator and the few board of selectmen people that are here, what's the plan? Do five-year plans exist? Is that, if you don't mind, thank you.
Okay, so thank you, everybody, for coming, and thanks to the school committee for working hard on this. Look, we're all in this together. You know, this has been coming a long time. I've been around and on these boards for a long, long time. And we predicted this twenty years ago, that this was coming. The way that Prop two and a half is structured, it doesn't work. There's no way for it to work. For instance, you know, with the increase in healthcare costs and retirement costs, and as you know, we get about, right now, our two and a half increase, about eight-hundred thousand dollars a year, a little more than that. That's what we get for new money every year. We also get a little bit of money from new growth and so on. Whole thing probably comes out to one-point-four million dollars. And then we give sixty-six percent, in this case, we gave to the school as their percentage, and then some has to run town government, police, and all the rest of the things. And we're in the same issue on the town government side, that it's very difficult to keep services and things going. It's going to get worse as we go along. We've been predicting this right along. It always is going to get worse unless we come up with new revenue streams. And it's a little difficult to do, believe it or not. You, you try to encourage everybody to bring business here and encourage things to, to bring new revenue streams, but so are all the other towns, so we're dealing with the same issues that we're dealing with as we go along. Unfortunately, this is an inherent problem in the way the system started way back in the seventies, okay? And it's just finally hitting the, hitting the skids. And the plan is very simple. We have to keep using the money and finding as many revenue streams as we can to try to keep things going the best we can until somebody wakes up and says, you know what? This ain't working. And that has to happen on the state level, unfortunately. We have no control of it over here. We're like just getting the crumbs as they fall down. We, you know, you know, I really, you know, I see everybody up here and they're angry and so on, and they kind of directed it at the school committee tonight, you know, and, and I felt bad for them because, you know, they're doing the very best they can, and everybody says, well, why don't we just leave the school open? Well, you don't leave it open because there's no money to leave it open. It's as simple as that. They're doing the best they can. And I appreciate what they do, trust me. And, and I know how hard it is because I'm involved all the time, and I know how hard this is. It's a very difficult thing. And I feel bad for all you folks out there. I have kids here. I have kids in the school system. I raised eight children around in Wareham. So I know exactly how difficult this is. Believe me, it hurts all of us. But we have to try to do the best we can until we find out, come up with new methods. We need people to start talking about school choice and, and doing something maybe about school choice because it's costing all the schools so much money. But that, all of these people, all of us have to get together and go after the legislators and say, hey, this isn't working for us. Two and a half doesn't work for us. All these things aren't working for us. And we need everybody to do that. We're all in it together, believe me. Every one of us in this room are in it together, including the school committee, including you, including the selectmen. We're all in it together, and we want to find a solution for it. What we're trying to do is find a solution for what's next year's budget because, you know, the time that we have to put it together is coming very fast, and we have to do it. We've been thinking about this for a long time. Alan Slaven, right, who's standing in the back of the room, he has been blowing the whistle about this for years, at all of our meetings, in front of the cameras, telling everybody, this is coming. It's, it's sad. It's very sad, I tell you. I, tears come to my eyes plenty of times over, over the cuts and the things that happened to people's lives. You know, these used to be pretty good jobs, the teachers and stuff had. They, they had a good, they didn't have the best money in the world, but they had a decent living. They, they felt like they were doing something, and they got along, and they had a good retirement, and everything was great. It's not like that anymore. And somehow, we all have to come together and come up with a way to make that happen. And I'm sorry that we don't have the answer tonight, but believe me, everybody is thinking hard about how to do this. But we need everybody to fight for this and to try to figure. But we need everybody to fight for this and to try to figure out ways. And at some point, everybody's going to say to you, "Hey, you know, we need to have an operational override because we can't get it any other way." And you folks have to go out there, like you did tonight, and vote. And say, and get people to come to the polls and say, "This is important to our children's lives." That's really it in a nutshell, and I really can't say much more. But I really appreciate everybody coming here, and I do appreciate how much this hurts for everybody. I really do. I just want you to know that. And I feel bad for you guys as well. I know you're taking a beating, and I feel bad for you as well. All right, thank you, sorry.
Jessie does ask an important question. And let me tell you very succinctly what the plan is. There's a great educational strategic plan. And if you'd ask our, for example, our kindergarten and first grade teachers, they are getting fabulous results as a result of being a part of this education plan. Our kids are learning at an extraordinary rate at kindergarten and first grade, and that is going to play for the rest of their lives. So there's a great educational plan. What is the physical plan? The physical plan is, based on town meeting approving, a million dollars to move forward with this new school. We are trying to do precisely that. I just toured a New Bedford school. Brand-new New Bedford school. If New Bedford can build a new school, certainly Wareham can build a new school. And by the way, they're not getting 100% reimbursement. They're getting 80%. We expect to get 75%. I would call that an extraordinarily good investment in our kids when the state is willing to match three-quarters of every dollar we put in. That's a great thing to do. So for those of you who think Wareham will not approve a new school, I challenge you to talk to everyone who wants to vote against it and say, "For 75 cents from the state, you want to say no?" So we do have, and one more thing. That location where Deacon would move from to mine it, the town wants that space to improve the commercial tax base, and that gets more money to the town. It's all good, and there is a plan.
My name is April. I work in the town. I have a student at the middle school who has actually done very well in Wareham schools, thankfully. I also substitute at the middle school as a para. And I often forget that I get paid because it's sadly low, and our teachers definitely deserve more in that regard. But my question is, recently, within the last probably year to two years, we've had our superintendent interviewing for positions in other towns. We've had the principal of the high school interviewing for positions in other towns. And we've now lost the principal at the middle school to a wonderful opportunity for him to another town. So you're asking our parents and our educators to have confidence in staying in our district when three of our leaders are looking to leave. How are we supposed to feel good about keeping our kids here and the money that is going to be going into the school when you guys are looking to get out?
Well, I, I'm here, and Mr. Palladino's here. And we've committed to be here for a long term.
Right, but you were actively interviewing for positions. I believe you were, there were two different towns that you were up for, and I know that Mr. Palladino was up for Plymouth, and we've now lost Dr. Stedman. So my question again is, how do you instill confidence in parents to keep their children in a school system when the administration has actively been interviewed to go somewhere else?
I've not interviewed this year.
Within the last two years?
I think this is unacceptable. This is not what this meeting is about.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be negative. This is a negative, it's a question.
I think we're going to move on to the next person.
My name is Tony. I have a son in high school. I've had a great experience in the Wareham school system with my son. We live in Wareham. It's not the richest town around, I'm going to tell you, but I love it here. I grew up here as a little boy. And it made changes. Well, he started off at the East Wareham School. It's closed now. Went to mine at Forest. Supposed to be into the sixth grade. They stopped in the fifth. He went to the middle school. You know what the difference is? We have the best teachers. We have the best principal. We have the best school committee because they work with what they have. And that's the real, you know, that's the reality. You can't ask them to do what they don't have the money to do with. You know, they have some great programs in the high school. He, when he was going from the fifth grade into the sixth grade at the middle school, a lot of his friends' parents took their kids out of the school system. They were wanting me like, "Be careful, it's terrible in the middle school." I'm looking, he's been going to school with these same kids for five years. What's going to change? I was listening to the newspaper and to the talk in the schools about programs that were coming up in the middle school, that were coming up in the high school. The STEAM Academy. You know, he got into that. It's been a great experience. He has really thrived. Is into high school, he got into the dual enrollment program. He is, it really is an awesome program. I think I talked to some of his friends' parents now who've left, and I'm, you know, telling them what he's doing, and I think they're questioning their decision. You know, if your kid wants to learn in this school system, their teachers there are going to teach them. They're going to learn, and you've got to help them at home. So I'm going to say, thank you very much. I may be the only beacon of light you get here tonight. And for the rest of you, that other gentleman was 100% correct. September's coming up. Please, go vote.
I've got to lower this a little bit because I'm short. My name is Tabitha Pierce. I am born and raised in Wareham. I went through K through 12 in Wareham. I raised a now 30-year-old, a now 21-year-old who both went through K through 12. My granddaughter is currently at the middle school. She was one of the first to transition, beginning in the fifth grade, that I have to tell you, we did not agree with. I still, to this day, feel that fifth grade is too early to be in the middle school. However, I can tell you that I also have a third grader at mine at Forest. My concern is, no one needs to tell me what great teachers we have in this town. I have my English teacher right here from eighth grade, sitting beside me, Mrs. Nyman. I also have my daughter's kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Keis, my 21-year-old, standing, sitting beside, behind me. Unfortunately, I have seen far too many schools close. I'm not a spring chicken, and I have also seen it with my children. It started with a Little Red School that we went to kindergarten. It, the multi-service center is where I went to eighth grade. That was our junior high. That was abandoned, and now it's offices. I watched, let's see, Depot Street, what is that? Hammond? East Wareham, okay? Then you have Onset, abandoned. Now it has the Boys and Girls Club in it. Closed. If you really want to go far back, let's go to Oak Grove on Onset Ave, shall we? Closed. None of those schools were reopened. So here's an eye-opener for you. If you close mine at Forest School, they are not going to give you funding to reopen it because they will say to you that you have worked it out so that everybody has a place. But I'll tell you this. I do not want my fourth grader going to the middle school. And even though I have attended Wareham School my entire life before going on to college, as did my 30 and 21-year-olds, and my granddaughter currently in the system, I have, I am going to look into charter school if that happens. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think my fourth grader belongs in the middle school with no playground, no outlet, nowhere to play, and being influenced on a bus by children older than him. And that's all I have to say about that.
My name is April. I'd like to start out by saying that I do not have a child in the Wareham public schools because I homeschool him. Not because of the schools here, but because of the schools where we used to live. However, he is not in the schools here because of some of the problems that I've heard about, which do not include teacher problems. I hear wonderful things about our teachers. They do not include an administration that doesn't care because I can clearly hear that they do. But they do include problems like bullying, which it seems to me that you're trying to address. I don't know how successfully, but it's good to see the effort. What I do know, both from where I used to live and where I live now, is that part of the big problem here is the budget. You voted down an override three and a half years ago? Was it three and a half years ago? Seriously, bad move. The writing was on the wall even then, and you voted it down? And now everybody's complaining because there's no money? Well, yeah, because you pay the, one of the lowest property taxes anywhere in this state, certainly in this area. I did, did just a quick check earlier today, looking at my property taxes. I pay anywhere from 10 to 15% less than the towns that immediately surround us. Isn't that what you want here? Okay, yeah. You know what? That would be about $600 for my property taxes, extra. I don't even have a kid in the, in the school system. And you know what? If that comes up again to either raise our property taxes or an override that would be equivalent to it, I'm okay with that. My kid isn't even in the school system, and I'm okay with that. So what is wrong with this town? Not the school board, not the schools, not the teachers. What is wrong with this town that you had to vote that down when I'm not even benefiting from it and I'm willing to pay it? That's just not cool.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kelly, and I'm a graduate of Wareham High School, and I currently have four kids invested in this school system. And in comment to the override, I completely agree. I was very disappointed when the 5% override did not pass a few years ago. I feel like a lot of budgeting focuses on cuts. Is there any way, and forgive my ignorance if I don't know, to get money from elsewhere besides grants and the state and the taxes from the town? Can we aggressively source income from, I don't know, a hotel or some other places in town that might support us? Banks?
Yes, we look for grants, and we do have, we do receive a number of grants. Unfortunately, with the change in the government, we've seen a reduction in the grants that we have received, and we're anticipating less money through our grants for next year. As far as the other revenue, I would, the town administrator I know certainly is seeking other revenue sources. But again, it's a finite pot. And for many of the resources, it's a one-time expense, which for us, it doesn't, you know, we need something that, yes. We also know that surrounding towns, had there been a 2.5% override such as Bourne did several years ago, we would be looking at $7 million more in our budget. In Carver, I believe it is, Michael? If we had had the 2.5 override in Carver, it was approximately... Similar, around... The same tax rate. We would be looking at approximately $10 million. So for us to, we would love to find additional revenue sources. We don't know where else to go. We're funded through the town, through the tax rate, and for us, that is our source. To increase our source, the tax rate would need to increase.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jamie Pelletier, and I am a parent of a ninth-grade student who goes to Upper Cape and a paraprofessional here at the middle school. I just have a couple of questions for clarification. One was, I think the number that you said, the capacity for the new proposed school would be about 1,020. Well, currently, you're telling me that you're going to put 800 students at Deacon, minus the preschool and minus the fourth graders. So those kids only equal 224 students? Aren't we cutting it kind of close on the capacity of that new school? Sorry?
So the, so the projections, so, just run those numbers by me again. What did you say? So, like, hey, look, so, so the...
You said 1,024 was the expected capacity of the new building school? And you said that this number that you had told us was that there was going to be roughly 800 students housed at Deacon if it was K through three?
Yep.
So that would be without the fourth graders and without the kindergartners? My assumption is that we would hope to put those students back into the elementary school? So that seems to me like the numbers are a little close on the capacity of that school.
So the capacity is based on projections? So you look at the birth rate in the town, you look at property movement, new houses being built, and the, I mean, school choice is a factor in there as well? And when you, when you project that out a couple of years, the state, it's actually a state, a formula, so they come to 120. But there is capacity, so that 120 does have capacity to grow if enrollment grows? 1,020, yeah. So is it, is it where we think enrollment will be in two or three years? Yes. Is there capacity to grow if enrollment grows? Yes.
Okay. I have a couple more questions, sorry.
No.
Can you tell me, with grades four through seven at the middle school, what the projected enrollment it would be? You said 800 at Deacon.
Yes.
767.
And what about the high school with eight through 12 in the pre-K?
Is 667.
But that's without pre-K. So if you added pre-K in, you would bring it up to about 760-something.
Thank you, okay. And to kind of get off topic as far as my questions, I just want to little, give a little background on me. I am a Wareham High School graduate. Sorry, Jeff, I'm going to call you out. We usually agree on most things. You asked a ton of questions about incorrigible kids. I was one of them. I came to Wareham High School a foster kid, failing, had no direction. And Wareham High School saved my life. I am now here giving back to the same town and same school system that helped me. So yes, do we have incorrigible students in our school? Of course, they're everywhere. But it's our job to help them become success stories. And there isn't one student that I, parent or educator in this school that I've met that isn't willing and wants to do that. Yes, we have budget constraints. They're working against us. I don't know where that question was coming to, if you were trying to get that there are students that we should be sending out elsewhere. Maybe there is, but right here and right now is not the time to discuss that. And even the most incorrigible student can become a success story. And you're looking at one.
Hi, my name's Deanna Semple. I also am a graduate of Wareham High School. I'm a transplant, though. I came here in fifth grade. I went to mine it. I just, we're not really clear. It's kind of vague as to the full-time employees that are going to be cut, 33. Are any, and please don't take this the wrong way, with all due respect, coming from the central administration office?
Yes, we're not, every, every area will be touched.
Okay. And I know that you said that you're maintaining paras. I just want, I'm not sure. I don't know if I heard you correctly. It sounded like you were maintaining paras, maintaining specialists, social workers, counselors, behaviorists, and special educators. So they will not be cut?
There are some through retirements, through other sources, will not, positions will be lost. But what we need to, what we will do is we will continue to meet the needs of our students with an IEP, on IEPs. We need to continue to meet the contractual obligations for staff, for their prep, so we need to secure X number of teachers for that. We know that our students' needs through IEPs may have paraprofessional support, so everything will be honored.
Including manageable class sizes. Is this off?
No, it's on. No, it's on. Um, and I just, I'm also a Wareham taxpayer, and I agree with the people who, I disagree with people who think we need an override, I'm sorry. Money has been mismanaged in the town, and that's a fact. But why don't we raise the commercial real estate, real estate tax rate? Is there a reason that we can't? It's the same as our real estate, commercial and, and, and my real estate is the same.
It doesn't, that shit doesn't increase tax revenue, it offsets it. It would give you even more money.
Why not?
It's two and a half.
Right, if you've got the same money base, so you're just distributing, et cetera.
I don't understand.
So if you have one set, you can only generate, call it thirty-three million in tax dollars.
Derek, there are people at home who would love to hear it. Could you go to the mic? So you have what's called the levy base, and that's what can only increase by two and a half percent every year. So as roughly, we are hitting close to a million dollars.
Okay, could we just increase just commercial ta, real estate two and a half percent? I mean, I know in other towns, most other towns, it's different. Their commercial rate is much higher.
Not all towns.
Most, not all towns. I didn't say all. We're not, but, but I've done my research, so I know.
Right, so once you reach, usually it's the, you get a spread of about eighty to twenty. Eighty percent residential, twenty percent commercial. We're also offset, if you look, we have a large personal property tax base. That's for the persons that are seasonal. They pay, pay extra into there.
And mobile homes.
We also have a large...
That's all they pay is personal tax, too.
The mobile homes pay a separate motor coach tax fee, which is outside of that.
Right, but they do pay...
Roughly about a hundred and thirty-two thousand a year. So...
What, come again?
About a hundred and thirty-two thousand a year you get from mobile homes.
Oh, all, all nine of them? Or eight or nine of them that we have?
Mobile homes, we have a thousand fifty.
I meant parks.
Well, all the total parks, yeah. The, the parks pay separately on the tax, but the mobile homes themselves, you get about a thou, a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Yeah. And, you know, that bill has been sitting at the State House, not being acted on. I don't know if we need to go out and go to our state representatives, or I don't know how to get that ball rolling, but that needs to...
Interestingly, I was in Boston with our state representative and the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development, Jay Ash, bringing it forward. It's been brought, our state rep brought that forward eight years ago, and it's been repeatedly brought forward. It was once passed through the legislature, but the Senate did not pass it. We need help to get that through.
What can I do?
It would be, it would be just to keep on working with us. Send letters up. You know, we'd love to get it through the Senate. We'd love, part of the reason is what they're trying to figure out as well, way, is when we're talking about it, when you have an affordable house, there's a deed restriction on it, and they're trying to figure out, how do you deed restrict a mobile home? That home can move. The land underneath it's owned by someone else. So there was a lot of good questions, and we're trying to figure out how to make that work. You know, you, I don't know if any of you, we see the signs for the mobile homes for sale, forty-five thousand, sixty thousand. It's certainly considered affordable. And what they're looking at, too, is the, the spirit of affordability. What happens if you have the person that has more assets that chooses to live in a mobile home? People do that. It's a, it's a, you know, nothing, nothing wrong with that. So they really want to make sure as well that it's, it's helping those that need the affordability. I'm with you. I think it would be great if we could get that done. It's something the selectmen have brought forward, I think, three, three, four straight years now. And it's not just bringing it forward. We're going up, we're meeting, they're attending hearings, and we're speaking about. So today was a big step, having, having a meeting with the cabinet-level secretary on it as well. So I appreciate the representative Gifford could even get us to that level.
Okay. Well, it's a start, I guess. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Missy Deccus. I'm actually not here because I have students. I have former students. I have a twenty and a twenty-five-year-old who both went through Wareham High School. By a show of hands, and I don't want to be a troublemaker, how many of you in this room have been to a town meeting when there has not been a school budget item? It's probably less than half. My husband and I, all right, maybe I'm giving myself too much credit, but I consider that we were on the younger side. Maybe we're getting to the older side now. The average age in a town meeting is retired. So if you think that you're going to get your things voted, don't show up one time when you're passionate about something. Come and listen and learn and keep abreast of all the situations and the, the financial instability of our town. That's where you need to be, not here attacking people who are volunteering their time, most of them. But it's frustrating to me that we go to town meeting, and sometimes, I'm going to be honest, it's boring. But if you don't keep up with it, you have no right to complain. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. Oh, and one more thing, I need a ride home because my husband left me. So if there's anyone here that's going my way.
My name is Ann Ames, and I am part of the staff at Minnet. I work in the preschool. We've been shuffled around. I don't know if it's because we have the lesser numbers, but please keep in consideration, when you move us, and it sounds silly, but you're dealing with three, four, and five-year-olds. Plumbing is a big issue. And I mean, that's a lot of money. I, I know it sounds silly, but it's not. It is a huge issue, and I hope somehow that is put into the budget. Thank you.
Just, just a quick comment on the Minnet, just so you realize there's a lot of thinking. We could have put, we could have proposed the school building committee, putting the new school in many different places. The reason we voted to put it in the same footprint as the current Minnet is because, A, it saves a lot of money, B, we don't have to dig up any more historical things that the Historical Commission would get upset about, and C, it means there'll be no kids there, so all that building will be much safer because of all that construction that will be going on. There will be no kids around to, to be potential, or staff members to be potentially hurt by all the construction. So it's money and safety, and that's the reason. That makes sense. And on top of that, there's demolition issues, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of thought went into that.
And move along more quickly.
Hi, my name's Michelle, and I've been involved in the school system for the better part of twenty years with my own children, who have spent every one of the years in Wareham Public Schools. I have nothing bad to say about the schools, the teachers. I see teachers here that, my kids' kindergarten teachers. You know, I have a daughter who's twenty-three years old. I see many faces in this room who have stuck it out through thick and thin, and it's been a lot of thin. So I looked at the town budget this afternoon a little bit. In the total general fund in the last fiscal year thirteen to the proposed fiscal year budget for this coming year, has gone up, up about sixteen percent in that time period. The school's budget has gone up about six percent. Sharpen your pencil and fix it. That's all I have to say.
I just wanted to, Mark Bianco again. I had a couple more questions. I haven't been in the backside of Deccus School, but are there still temporary portable classrooms as part of Deccus right now?
Yes.
What year were those put in?
Twenty-four years ago.
Twenty-four years ago?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yeah, that sounds about right. It's been about eighteen years since my kids were in there. I just wanted to make sure. The, the average cost per student in the school system, based on this budget, comes out to about eleven-five per student? Is that about right?
Business manager says okay.
Okay. And our contribution to Upper Cape is about three point three million? How many students are we sending to Upper Cape?
Your number's been corrected to a little over three point four million.
Three point four million to Upper Cape? How many students? So it's averaging out to about the same eleven-five for Upper Cape? It's less, it's less, so it's an incentive to send them there, yeah. In, in the charter school, the average cost per person? Per student, rather? Do we know? Okay, so we only pay as we go? So it won't exceed eleven-five?
The charter, charter school reimbursement pays on state assessment on, depending on the charter schools are going to, and our per pupil cost, so it's pretty similar to what our per pupil cost is.
Okay. The average class size at Deccus currently is, how many students?
In the twenties.
Is, what's, is it twenty or twenty-nine?
Twenty. We don't have any elementary students classes at twenty-nine.
And the average size at Deccus?
Oh. Average class size at Deccus?
So is it fair to say that our average class size at the two elementary schools is about twenty-two students max, and we're going to push to about twenty-seven to?
Twenty-four, twenty-four to twenty-six.
With the combination of the two?
Well, at Deccus, kindergarten will be approximately twenty. First grade will be approximately twenty-four, second grade will be approximately twenty-two, third grade twenty-four.
And the, the reduction of staff, the thirty-three that will lose, whether they be administrative or instructional staff, what, what percent of that thirty-three comes out of the middle school and high school?
I will not answer that yet because staff have not been notified.
Will be able to answer that by March fourteenth for your next meeting when the budget gets approved?
No, you won't, because notification will not be made to staff members, and we will not share where staff will be or who staff will be until staff has been notified.
When will the public be notified?
The public will not be notified of who the staff are. The staff will be notified in May.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for specific names. I just want to know of the thirty-three, is there, is a, is part of the, again, when I was up here before, I want to make sure that we looked at the middle school and high school, because we're saying that the high school right now is below its ideal staffing. The numbers are low. So with a statement like that, it makes sense to me to look for that for reductions. So did, before we take the full impact at the elementary level, did we look at reductions at the middle school and high school?
Yes, absolutely. We've looked district-wide, and we're well, you know, we're well aware of the class sizes. We know that class sizes need to be as equal as they can be across the district.
So is it, is it fair that out of the thirty-three that'll be lost, is it only three or four that'll come out of the middle school, high school of that number?
Again, I'm sorry, I can't give you that detail. But I will tell you that we've looked at equality throughout the district.
Okay, I, I'll just, I'll just finish here then. I, I appreciate everybody's time, and I think you've given us some good answers in, in, I guess, sitting on town committees. I know this is a real challenging job, but there's been a lot of vague answers here tonight. There's been, what is the plan for the next five years? It wasn't a clear answer what the plan for the next five years is. We don't know what the reduction of force is going to be on the impact of students. So two weeks from now, I don't know if we're going to have better answers, and I don't know that we're going to really understand without those answers what the full impact is going to be with this budget for the school committee. So we don't, we don't know what, we don't know what the projections for the students are. So as, as we, as we all want to participate in these town meetings, we're going to expect to show up with some type of concrete answers and resolution to these things and planning. This came across to me, having been a resident of this town for twenty-five years, as a Band-Aid to co, to, to resolve this year's budget problem, and not as a solution that shows us where we are in three years, where we are in five years, and how we solve for this. So I don't think it needs to be answered, but it's just how it was received. Thank you.
Your point is well taken, but I think you need to understand, imagine you, if you were running a business, you could, with some degree of accuracy, project, protect, project expenses and have almost no idea what the revenue was going to be. You might not even enter that business, actually, if you were, if you were thinking about it, but that is in essence what the town faces.
I, I can appreciate that as a business owner, and I spend a lot of energy knowing where my revenue's going to be, twelve months, twenty-four months, and thirty-six months down the road. I, I understand that it's a challenge because our one revenue source is on our tax base. But at the same time, we can't make educated decisions on overrides and taxes unless we know what we're going to get for that money. Right now, what we're going to get for the taxes that we're paying with a two and a half percent increase is a decrease across the board in all areas. Nobody has shown us where we start to recover from this.
I can say, I wouldn't be sitting here, and I wouldn't support anything that didn't produce a high-quality education for the kids of Wareham, thanks to the staff, many of whom are here tonight.
And again, I can appreciate that, but I also know the teachers do deserve increases. All of us do need a cost of living increase each year. But the, it won't be worth the cost for the teachers that remain here, for the extra challenges that they're going to have from the reduction of force. Very simply stating, all of us have private jobs, public jobs, I don't care. When we, we take a reorganization and we lose jobs, we end up wearing multiple hats, the stress levels go up, right, and we're encouraged to move on to other things. That, that's why I think, again, just, it's, it's the way my brain works, right? I will agree and I will follow if you can show me what's at the end of the road. Right now, we had a whole lot of discussion, and we only know what's at the end of the road for this budget cycle. And I have to fully agree with each person that got up here to say, if you close Minnet and you don't get your school approved, am I going to stand here twenty-four years from now and ask the same question? Are those temporary classrooms still behind Deccus? Thank you.
We have to pause for a moment because it's ten o'clock, and I have to take a vote of the school committee whether or not to go past ten o'clock. I just have, procedurally, I just have to do that. I need a motion.
Motion to go beyond ten o'clock.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Four, one, zero. So we're continuing. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Corey Tripp. I was a little shocked at the statistics we had earlier about...
If you're leaving the room, could you just do so quietly, please? Thank you.
I was wondering, how many employees in the school system are for discipline base only?
Are for discipline?
For discipline. That was a pretty large amount of people on there to deal with a discipline problem in these schools. Let me rephrase that. How many days of school have the kids been in school this year, so far?
I missed that.
How many days of school have the kids been in?
A hundred. So just in the middle school alone, there was over seven hundred disruptions where kids were sent to the office. Does anyone else find that insane? Anybody? I mean, I don't know. To me, the people that are teaching one class, two classes, shouldn't they get back to teaching a day's worth of classes if they're here for teaching? When I went to school, there was a vice principal, a principal, for all grades that went to a school. And then you had your, obviously, the people you'd go down to to talk to if you needed to, but the fact that we're babying these children, in my opinion, while my daughter is falling behind because a teacher got let go, another one quit midway through the year, it's really starting to irk me. Now, for the town administrator, you said how many percent of the money, town's money goes to the school? You said sixty-something? Sixty-six. Okay, town received sixty-two million dollars in taxes last year, correct? Two thousand eighteen.
So the gentleman that's talking, sort of, Troppiano, was a selectman. If you're asking about the total cost of, when you're talking about the in...
I'm talking about the budget. Talking about the budget.
If you look at just the general budget, you send...
Twenty-eight million to the school.
Twenty-eight point five to the school, three million to Upper Cape Cod Tech, and then another three, three point four to Upper Cape Cod Tech, and then another three million in school choice or so, a little over.
Okay. And is it correct that twenty-two percent of the general budget goes to, pretty much, what is it, employee benefits? Okay, and is it correct that twenty-two percent of the general budget goes to, pretty much, what is there, employee benefits for the town as well?
Yeah, you have fourteen million employee benefits, which would include retirement, workers' comp, insurance.
Yeah, of the sixty-two, that's twenty-two percent of the town's budget. And we're worried about a million dollars for our children. I work full-time, I bust my butt. And I pay my own 401K, I pay for my own retirement. You guys can't find a million dollars of the four million that goes to your retirement funds? For our children?
That, that's legally established, you can't change it.
Legally established.
Yeah. Through the Commonwealth.
Okay, and the next question, you said that, in an earliest statement, that commercial taxes being more than residential wouldn't do anything for the town?
If you increased the commercial tax base, no, right on.
Right now in Calver, the residents pay seventeen per, seventeen dollars per thousand. And, uh, commercial pays twenty-seven dollars per thousand, you're telling me we wouldn't make more money with that?
Correct, 'cause it's the same pool of money, you're only splitting it up differently.
Does this town give benefits to any of these businesses coming to the town tax-wise?
Yeah, the, um, for the new hotel, they did a TIF agreement, it's currently at eighty percent. The valuation of that property is about six million, so you'd call that roughly sixty-six thousand, so eighty percent of that.
The next thing that bothered me-
I think here about fifty thousand, if you could let me finish.
Okay, go ahead.
They bring in about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars' worth of hotel motel excise tax.
Okay. Next question, I found it quite disturbing that we're having this meeting while next door we're voting on, if I'm not mistaken, another apartment complex.
No, they're not voting on it, they had to have the hearing statutorily.
Why couldn't we do this on separate days?
If they didn't have, excuse me, sir, please, if they did not have the meeting within thirty days, it would automatically be approved through zoning, which means it would automatically get a free ride in here. So without having that meeting, that hundred and seventy-four unit development would be coming in here.
Whoa, a hundred and seventy-four? Last time I checked, I thought it was one forty-six.
No, it's a hundred and seventy-four.
And how much, if that goes through, where are those kids gonna go to school?
They would be school choice, Town of Wareham, Upper Cape Cod Tech.
Hopefully school of choice, 'cause there ain't no room here.
So, do you think, so I'm just trying to confuse, do, do you think we're supporting bringing that in, have you seen the letters from the Board of Selectmen?
Um, we just built one right over on Cranberry Highway, another one, Union Pond, right? Did you guys approve that?
No, we didn't build that, the town doesn't build those.
You approve, right?
Forty-B allows those to come in without our zoning protections, that comes from the state, that's what we are up there fighting today. So acting like we are inviting this in is absolutely wrong.
Well, I just wanna understand this, I mean, you can't go in there and explain to them that there's no room to school any of these people?
You actually can't, there, the laws allow them to go beyond, that was one of the things we said today, I was talking about tonight, and they allow that coming in.
So pretty much every possible way to make money for this town, there's a lot to prevent it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Every way we can find money for the children, there's a lot to prevent us from getting it, is what they're saying.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at it, so, so just so you understood, if we wanted an extra million dollars today, correct, we would need approximately an eighty-eight million dollar, um, facility coming in assessment, business coming in worth eighty-eight million dollars. We go out, we apply for the grants, we're going for a community opportunity zone, which will create better zoning opportunities. We did the forty-three D expedited Permitting, we're trying to bring in businesses all the time, you're right, commercial development's great. The new solar going out off of Charge Pond Road, that's gonna be fantastic, although it's sad about the trees, because that potentially can bring in several hundred thousand dollars a year with no impact to the community.
How much should we get for the solar farm over on Tolda Road?
I haven't received the assessments on that yet, but I would imagine, given its size, you're probably looking about forty thousand dollars. So everybody, when they talk about, they think about the new growth that we just got from, from Aldi's, they ask, where's that money going? So if that's a three-million-dollar business, right?
Yep.
Let's call it a ten million, that's, that's a hundred thousand dollars if you're lucky.
I mean, I just find it hard to believe we can't find the money to keep a school open to make these kids. And, trust you, I pay my fair share of taxes in this town with the amount I land down.
I don't, I don't doubt that every single person does.
So, you're totally against this project that they're trying to pass through?
Absolutely, it's, it's, from what we've worked on for, what we've worked for the last few years, we've worked with the employees to reduce their health insurance, it used to be seventy-five, twenty-five, moved that down to sixty-seven and a half, that saves several hundred thousand dollars a year. Other, from going from self-insured to going to the Plymouth County Health Insurance, saved us money for several years, that's going up now. Everything we've been done, we've done is to try and make this a better community, and having that come in, I believe hurts the fabric, but also for the people in there, it's gonna be a hundred and seventy-four units essentially in a desert. There's no amenities around them, I don't think that's fair to our community or for the people that are gonna be placed in there.
Oh, absolutely not, I agree with you one hundred percent. I'm just trying to figure out, like, so, the apartment complexes, what do they pay for taxes?
I'm sorry.
The apartment complexes, what do they pay for taxes?
So, I'm gonna have to cut this off, but this, it's supposed to be-
Well, I'm just trying to find money for the kids, I mean, keep taking, 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 taking.
I totally understand that someone behind you too. Derek, do you have a short answer for that?
For that?
Finish it off.
It would be whatever the valuation on it is, if it's valued at, uh, three million, it's, you divide that by a thousand, multiply it by eleven point two eight.
Mr. Tripp, I appreciate your support, I just have to keep it going, that's all, thank you.
Well, we've got the medicinal marijuana, well, the retail marijuana on the thirteenth, and then you've got the annual April, which I think is on the twentieth, is that the twenty-third, this?
April twenty-third.
Yeah, Monday, April twenty-third.
Okay.
Hi, um, my name's Allison Bumpus, I've spoke, or I've emailed you all, so you should be familiar with who I am.
Yeah.
I've got four kids in the school system, they've been successful, I don't, I'm, my only kid, well, I have a couple of concerns about closing Minnetonka. One, I'm afraid that, like everyone else said, that this new school's not happening. If, if the people say, hey, you, you figured it all out, you don't need the new school, then what happens, I am concerned about that. But say, it does happen, that's great, you know, I know we've already discussed that, but it is a concern. My second concern would be, the class sizes that you mentioned would be acceptable if there were no behaviors in the classrooms, but there are. And to ask a teacher to handle twenty-six students with the disruptions that I see every day, I see every day with my own eyes, uh, it's not beneficial to our children, it's not beneficial to the teachers, it's just not, I mean, there's, despite the, I don't know, despite the presentations we've had about discipline, I, I disagree. I, discipline is a huge problem, I don't think enough is being done, if you could somehow, somehow separate the behaviors from the students who behave themselves, and I know that that sounds bad, I'm not saying that the students who misbehave are bad people, I'm not saying that they don't deserve an education, I'm saying my student does deserve an education, mine does, just as much as they do. Um, people are leaving. It's the reason why people are leaving, and I'm not saying that, I'm, please don't think I'm speaking against these students, I'm not saying that, that they're not worthy of an education. I, I, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that I do wish that they would be placed in an environment that would help them, as well as help our kids. It's only beneficial to everybody. It's just, it's a, I just wanna come back to discipline. Please, it's a huge concern, and I'm not the only parent that feels it, I really wish, I really wish that people who had chosen to pull their kids out would come here and speak as to why, I promise you, discipline would have been the main topic. And like I said, my kids have been very successful, they're involved in the, they, I have one in Minnetonka, I have one in the middle school, I have two at the high school, dual enrollment IB programs, very successful, I, I can't complain, I don't have personal complaints, but I do see, and I have in the past, seeing my children's education be disruptive, I can honestly say, I think one of my daughters lost their entire first year of school. Luckily, I stayed here, I, I fought, I, I tried my best, but, um, it's tough, you know, it, it's tough, it's frustrating as a parent. That daughter is now a sophomore in high school, she's doing fine, but she lost a whole year of school, that's not fair. And it was simply because of behaviors, and I didn't wait to speak up, I spoke up the minute the behaviors happened. And they continued for an entire year, and these, all these years later, I'm still seeing these behaviors, and more times than not, they're the same children, they're not different children, they're the same ones who need extra help, that aren't getting the help that they need. That's just, that's just it.
My name is Colleen Kinsman, and I have one question that's been asked three times and not answered fully. What is the district doing about the three million dollars going out, out of district? Why are we not pulling those kids back in? You, Jeff, you said it today, you've talked to the students, you've talked to other parents, and it's always the discipline that's being taken. What is being done to bring our students back to Wareham? And that question, again, three other people have asked that, and it hasn't been answered.
I hearken back to Mrs. Chandler, if she's still here, there she is. You know, there's a part of me that thinks, even though the school committee doesn't have a role in the discipline of the schools by law, every time you look at discipline, you see, Massachusetts General Law says this, and the school committee doesn't get mentioned once, except for things like assaulting a staff member, and that's on the periphery, meaning, we only get involved if someone objects to the punishment, okay? I agree with you completely, I think to a greater, see, here's the problem, I'm about to say something and I know people are going to hate the fact that I've said it, but I agree that we are sacrificing the many for the few when it comes to the educational environment, that's just the way I view it. Does that mean I believe that the few don't deserve a free and appropriate education? Yes, but not if they're sacrificing the many as a result of their current behavior. So, to me, the best thing we could possibly do is significantly improve the discipline in these schools so that the perception of Wareham Schools going forward is, we take this really seriously. I, I had a question asked of me by teachers, the Teachers Association, and I gave a lousy answer, which was, what do you think ought to be done by the, I think the number was forty-six assaults of staff? Excuse me?
Sixty.
Thank you, sixty assaults of teachers by students. To say that's unacceptable is beyond, uh, it's just, uh, beyond unacceptable. And yet, we have, there's another part of me that totally respects the fact that no one wants to give up on a child. I don't wanna give up on a child either, I just want them to get that free and appropriate education somewhere else so the rest of the students can, can really benefit from the great teaching that is taking place in this district. So, the answer to your question, I think we gradually get those kids back, those parents and families back, or stop losing them at the same rate if we send a message that there will be discipline and consequences, and, and it should be progressive, but ultimately, you have to either outplace or expel.
I know personally, I've made this con, this comment multiple times. Every year, for the past, my son is second year of college, so we came in here when he was in the kindergarten, I signed an agreement every single year that told me the rules, to hold me accountable for what my child did in school. Why is that not being done? Because it's not. I mean, I've, I have to say, I had an incident in the middle school, they held, they, I sat down, I held my own daughter accountable for her actions. And it was handled perfectly. But I'm seeing on social media, I'm seeing on Channel twenty-five, parents screaming and yelling, and then it seems as though the town is giving in to that child. And my child is not learning because something's going on in the classroom. I'm holding my child accountable, I'm fulfilling that book that I signed at the beginning of the year. These parents, and there's a lot that are amazing parents, that hold their child accountable. The problem is, is those accountability child is not getting what they deserve because there's not enough accountability on the other child. It's, it's not the schools, the schools are amazing, they're doing what they need to do, but their hands are tied. We, as parents, need to figure out what is acceptable, and we need to follow those rules, we need to follow those handbooks. And the handbook needs to be put in front of them and says, you signed it, you own it, deal with it. And we need to bring, you know, we're questioning a million dollars, but there's three million dollars going out to kids that are, are fed up. Parents that are fed up with all of this, and you've said it yourself repetitively, year after year after year. Something's gotta change.
Good evening, Adama Camerano. You guys all know me, uh, I'll speak for it, uh, through dollars and cents, is the disciplinary problem in the school costing us more money than it should? I know that, that seems, that everyone is saying that the disciplinary problem is a problem. I mean, when we went to school, the teacher could hit ya, you, you can't do none of that anymore. I wish they could, because I got the knuckles to prove it, but is it costing the school more money to disciplinary problem that we have? That's my question, thank you.
Yeah, I, I would like to give you a direct answer, but it's really yes and no, because at times when students are having behavior issues, they're sent out of district, which certainly costs us X number of dollars. It takes staff, it takes resources to deal with some of the issues that our students are bringing to school with them. Do I think any student comes to school with the intent of misbehaving? Yeah, maybe a couple of them, I'll give you that, but I think some students come to school with some issues, emotional issues, um, trauma issues, that really impact how they are ready to learn, and when that takes place, it does take resources, it does take time. So it's a yes and no.
Thank you.
Hi, Rhonda Vugan, I have a fifth grader in the middle school, uh, sorry, sixth grader in the middle school, he's gonna kill me. He's in sixth grade now, but he was a fifth grader, he was one of the first fifth graders to win over, to go over when the, uh, fifth grade was moved. And I think that the school did an amazing job when it came to separating those children and also providing, uh, the additional support that were needed on the buses at the time. The experience that I had was great, so I can understand the same concerns that the parents of fourth graders had, I had the exact same thing. And, um, whatever happens at the end of the day, um, I truly, truly hope that the district continues to work in the best interest of those students if that happens. The reason why I'm up here is to talk about discipline, um, and I know that it is one of the reasons why that there are, uh, parents that leave the district. I, we talk with, um, almost every single day, what, how much time off learning did you have tonight, Jackson? So we talk about time off learning when in the classroom, and sometimes it's good days and sometimes it's bad days. But that's the, that, that's where we are today, and sometimes I think it's learning lessons for my son, because that's what real life is all about, he's gonna have challenges. And so that's the reason why we work through those every single day, but one of the things that I wanna say about discipline is, you heard from the district today of the things that they're working on, but also us as parents can do things too. Providing additional resources and, and things for our children is currently happening through the PTA, it's currently happening through the school council. And the more, and I understand that there are working parents out there, I'm a full-time working mom, but being able to be part of your school culture and leaning in and helping them do things will help when it comes to behavior issues ultimately, because we're providing more opportunities for our children. And the other good thing gonna say, that I'm gonna say, and I know I'm gonna get beat up tomorrow, is that I think one of the reasons why, and we heard from a, a parent earlier today, that she homeschools her kid and she's not putting them in because of what she hears, and what she's hearing is probably through parents that she's talking to, but also online. I think that there are a lot of parents that they're not thinking about coming from this, back to the school district is because what they're hearing and what they're listening to on social media. I see it all the time, and I have to tell you that the only reason why I ever think about taking my child out of the school is because of the social media frenzy that is going on right now, instead of working within the district, working within the school system. going on right now, instead of working within the district, working within the school system, working through the PTA, working through the school council, there are probably five different people that your child interacts with before you get to the superintendent. So it's important that we work with our teachers and really try to dive in and do that, instead of using social media as an opportunity to air what is going on. And I hear it, that nobody else is listening to me, so I'm gonna use social media. Please, email your school committee members, keep trying, if one door closes, open up another one, it's important. Though, that, at the end of the day, is gonna help, it's all of our responsibility to be able to get parents back from school choice. The school can't do a lot about school choice, because it is, it's a state mandated, mandated thing, we can't stop people from taking their kids out of district. But we, what we can do as a community is make sure that we're talking in a way around how we're being helpful to our school and to our students. And just always remember, when you're posting online, there are kids, there are kids that sometimes go onto social media even though they're not age thirteen, they're reading it, just remember that, those kids are reading what we're writing online, and it's their school, and they're proud of their school, so just please think about that. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Pratt, and I am a very proud Viking mom. Um, I have just a quick question, I think something we kind of blast over rather quickly was the, the preschool moving to the high school. How many students are we talking about in that preschool age group that are gonna, being considered to move to the high school?
Yes, being considered to move to the high school, um, it fluctuates, we start approximately seventy, and we usually end up around a hundred, and it ebbs and flows as students come in at a certain age level. It's a mix, it is like peers, and it's students with special needs. What, one reason why we were, we are looking at the high school is because we can team with the high school, and it can become a class for students, child development, there's preschools in many schools, district, or school systems across the Commonwealth and actually across the states, um, and we, and it's, and so that's one reason why we're looking. We are aware that some issues need to be addressed, such as the plumbing, um-
Having the right size equipment.
Yes. Um, play area, that's vital, we understand that, and those are all issues that we're looking at, because our little ones do need a play area, and do need appropriate size other-
Do you think that there is enough room at the high school to accommodate this very different age group, along with, you know, the high school students that will be from eight to twelve?
Yeah, that's one thing that we're exploring, we do know that there was a preschool, a preschool was there a number of years ago, so it had, it's not, it's not something that has not been done, you know, we're looking at that, we're also looking at the middle school, um, we just need to make sure that where, wherever we moved the preschool, it's a, it's the best match that we can have at the time.
All right, I under, I understand you guys have a very tough pill to swallow, you're trying to do everything you possibly can for our students, for our staff, and, and I do so appreciate that. I know that this is not your doing, and you are truly trying to make the best of a horrible situation that we as a town are now in. I agree with mo, all of the parents who have been here who are concerned, and it's great that you're out here tonight, it's, it says a lot for the community, but it would be really great if we could get these numbers out to other meetings, to town meetings, to PTA meetings, to booster meetings. If we had ten percent of this group helping doing something as simple as box tops and things that we donate, we would be in a much better situation, even for like the athletic boosters and things like that. I think that we as a community have got to come together, we can't be blaming the people that are up on the stage right now, yes, we don't like these, the things that they're suggesting, I don't, I have no desire to have the preschool at the high school, or to have our fourth graders on the buses with eighteen-year-olds, but we've gotta do something, and I don't think, you know, being upset and voicing our concern at some of these people is the right way to go, I think the people we need to talk to are at the town, I think our voices need to be heard on a much larger level. Send emails, but also more importantly, thank the teachers when you see them, it's great to be here tonight and have all the applause, but these people are doing this every day, yes, with these discipline problems, and they're coming to work every day, they're making pennies, when you consider it, there's no way we can ask them to, to cut their salary, there's no way that we can say, hey, as a group, can we, can we absorb these? They're, they're not making what, even half their worth. I beg you guys, come out to the town meetings, volunteer, one hour a month, help the PTA, help the athletic boosters, ju, it, just little things like that mean so much. If we could get half of you guys out, it would be so amazing. I'm just, I, I'm frustrated as a parent too, you know, um, my daughter's done phenomenal, phenomenal through the dual ed, dual enrollment program, and I think that we have so much more that we can do, but we've gotta have the town more involved. Thank you guys so much, I know it's been a really late night, I know that you're doing the best that you can, I, I wish you all the luck, and we, we've really just gotta talk to the town, you guys cannot make these cuts, it's unacceptable.
Thank you. I can take, we can take one more, last one.
Hi, Terri DeFilippo, I am a teacher at Minnetonka, but I'm standing here as a parent, I have a son in the high school, he's a sophomore. I've used this example before, in first grade, there were twelve boys on the youth soccer team, they all attended Wareham Public Schools. Right now, as sophomores, there are two of them at the high school. My son does not get to know his community, because his community is not with him in school. We have to come up with a solution to bring these people, this large part of our community back to Wareham Public Schools, please. Thank you.
That's the end of the public comment, thank you so much for coming to hear that. I have to find out, I, we might be closing the meeting, do we have, is there anything we have to vote on? Madam Super, that we must vote on this evening, this is, I have this out here.
Michael, do we have to?
Probably should do the payroll.
No, Michael says no.
Payroll warrants, do we have to do that?
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you again, payroll warrants then.
Wait, Michael says we don't have to.
Michael, we don't have to vote on the warrants?
Okay.
Move, with approval of the warrants as, as stated in the, uh-
Do I have a second?
Superintendent's-
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay.
Move it, move adjournment, stand it up.
Move to adjourn, second? Uh, that's it, thank you, everyone.